What's up everybody? This is the poker coaching study session. Today we're here with Arnie. Arnie played the deep stack fifteen, took it down. Let's see how he did it. Arnie, okay, so this is like the global GG, right?
Correct, yeah.
And then it's like late night, kind of.
Yeah, I think this was, uh, I guess, yeah. I think, I don't know if that's the start time or the end time, but I definitely didn't start it at, well, maybe it was eight o'clock. Not too sure. I don't remember.
And then it, do you have an idea when does, when do they finish? Like they're, they're shorter than.
These ones are a little bit shorter. I get, I think this one was around.
Four or five hours.
Hours, four and a half ish, yeah.
When you play like on daytime, it's like eight, ten, twelve hours, but these smaller fields are really good because you can, like variance is lower. And then the, the time of the game is also a lot shorter. Alright.
I don't know, this deep, I open three point five bigs, this ace check, U T G, and in general.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah, I do sometimes, but a lot of times people just fold it, like they just don't.
Okay.
They still don't want to flop.
Do you have charts that say you should open that big?
Hmm, no, but some gentle little charts were putting this out.
Like he.
I don't think, I don't think three point.
Yeah.
I don't think three point five is the GTO sizing. I mean, I exploitively raise larger from steals. Um, but I don't think it's like GTO is gonna raise to three point five still.
I agree. So in general, on these pair of boards, uh, the sizing you wanna use is really small. So I would venture to say like, you don't really have any big bets here. Here you go for a big one, but this, this more texture, whenever it's fair, it's actually the other way around. It should be.
I think it's fine this deep.
Yeah, you do see more big betting deep, but like this is the exact kind of hand that I don't think really does great betting big. Um, like we're trying to get him off like pocket deuces. Good luck.
I agree with that as well. I think it's probably a check in the solver actually.
It also depends on, um, the pairs and if you're out of position or not. Sometimes when you're out of position, you get to bet larger.
The king eye board against a big blind, you gotta bet a lot here.
Yeah, I haven't looked at two hundred big blind solves, but I'm guessing, yeah. It's just because we're so deep.
And then we, we don't have a smaller size, but if we did, I venture to say we would check a little bit less, bet a little bit.
Exactly. But yeah, you see in these really deep, really deep solves, like two hundred big blinds effective, um, it's really important to have some kind of backdoor flush, backdoor straight. It's like that hand with the single spade makes a much more attractive bet. Um, and then as far as like trying to build out a big bet, I would maybe like some kind of high low, like, like, I don't know, ace five with the backdoor clubs would be an interesting big bet more than ace queen there.
Look at this army.
I think Jack X and ten X were good, like if you have like a low with the flush.
Yep, yeah, that seems decent.
Straight draw.
Uh, early in the tournament, I usually try to be quite aggressive just to see what the player, how the players are gonna react.
I think it's a mandatory call here. His sizing is not that big with.
Yeah, easy call.
Yeah, definitely deep enough.
Yeah, we just don't get a, we don't get a fold that.
You're so deep that you're implied out just through the roof.
Yeah. This was at the end of a long day too.
Oh, well, for flopping sets, that's good.
I like going super polar here, like, no, like a hundred fifty percent pot or more.
Okay.
I don't know, we have enough nuts to go that big, like we have sets. But we don't have like straights. We do have two pairs.
Yeah, we have king ten, we have five, six, we have pocket fives, we have pocket six, we have king six, we have king five. Everyone else is capped.
Over.
That might be good.
A great edge up, multi-way, seems spicy.
I don't know, uh, ETO three ways, add up two hundred big blinds.
Yeah, exactly. I mean, the general principle, you pull your sizes down. If in usual play, you bet this like one fifty, then maybe three ways you can bet it ninety or eighty.
I don't know that. Last thing we're looking at simple three way, it, there were spots where the sizes were even like betting larger more often, so I had, I don't know, I've, I've been careful about thinking to adjust my sizes too much multi-way.
Yeah. Wait, did we have a three point five earlier and now we're opening two point six on the button?
We didn't three point five yet, or it's all two point six.
Okay, that's, that's legit.
Okay.
Oh, we're, we're super using, we can see their cards, nice.
But then. Oh.
So I saw his hand, so I wanna raise.
You can't raise.
You can't raise, you, you need like ten, five to raise here.
Ace ten. Queen, right?
I might have checked raised this one.
Oh, no, you need even better than ten five, you're way too deep, so you're like.
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
You know?
Yeah, it's only positioned and he's got the offsuit, he's got some offsuit tens, so you gotta be like top, your best tens here, right? Like.
Yeah, it has to be like.
Eight, ten, king, ten.
Cause if you're check raising jack ten here, that's how I busted the main last weekend.
Yeah, I, I don't think queen ten, queen ten will even check raise much. I think it's just ace ten, king ten.
Too deep maybe here. Wouldn't surprise me.
Your worst tens might do it so, at some frequency, just because the, uh, out, the, your two pair out is clean.
Yeah, he doesn't wanna raise at all for this one. Let's see the range.
And your raises will probably be large, the ones that do raise, he bet big, but it's a kind of, well, it's not super dynamic, so I guess it'll just be clicky.
We need like.
Not those size up. Little bit.
Probably queen, jack plus.
He doesn't wanna raise hands.
Yeah.
Let's see, it's too deep.
Yeah, that's true.
He's gonna raise like queens.
You still have to raise it sometimes. If you have bluffs, so. I mean, if he did, it's not bad.
What happened to my colors again? Okay, so call.
Those are my favorite colors. Those are my colors.
These?
Yeah.
Oh my god, Tim.
Cause you can see.
I like those too.
From small to medium to big bets. I love that. I don't like the pumpkin spice colors.
Yeah, I like it too.
So far, I like it. I'll see when it mixes harder and there's like four or five bet sizes, I'll let you know if I still like it done or not.
Yeah, I'm a fan of this, this color scheme.
Yeah.
Louis' colors are like a blind man telling you what a rainbow is. They're just the worst.
Think you gotta call them.
Call like them or?
You're supposed to call, but this sucks.
I mean, he's still got bluff, so.
Yeah, he's, he's supposed to have.
Diamonds, he's got like jack X, queen X, getting a good queen.
He's supposed to have, okay, there you go. He had a lot of equity.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of equity there, yeah. So what is? That's the deep I'm, I'm probably calling the whole way unless he goes really triple barrels it off there, I think.
He's got to, I think as well.
Yeah, I think he's gotta go with that.
No, his hands are the worst bluff.
No, even though they're front door bricks, he's just got such a range advantage, he's gotta go, he's gotta barrel.
Yeah, that's sometimes at least with it, sometimes. Mixing fifty fifty.
But I've got a pretty strong range there, calling him down twice, right? So.
Yeah, but he, the, like he, the, the thing, like barreling here has merit.
Yeah, Jack's nice to have here as well as your bluff, like you got the Jack.
He needs to get like a nice to fold or a king to fold. So for him, barreling a triple one is very profitable, I think.
Are we folding nine X?
No.
You sure?
Yeah.
Profit is just from a size, I think.
I don't know about that.
So it goes.
We're definitely folding pairs if he barrels.
One forty-nine.
I'm folding nines. There you go.
I'm folding nines, okay, folding some.
Holding, holding jack ten. Queen ten.
Definitely getting ring of a size and king, yeah.
Wow, um.
Yeah, so it's holding a lot.
That's for a huge size, that's for the over bet, yeah.
Well, that's the, that's the thing, right? It picks it a little bit here.
It's the most used sizing, you know?
Give him the sixty-one, give him the sixty-one percent, just the, I think some nines will still fold.
I agree. I think tens are gonna call, but nines are folding.
Ace, like king, I, you get them to fold, that's good enough for me, so that's.
Nine, queen nine, jack nine, oh, nine eight, so.
Some, yeah, okay. Five eight, yeah, do we defend this deep? Just a fold, right?
One big blind, yeah.
I think I, I think I've defended here.
Yeah, it's only one big blind, too. If he goes three X, maybe you wanna fold five, but whatever, it's like one big.
I don't know, I'm not calling here.
It's a fold.
Mistake.
Uh, it's like mixing, I think it's bottom of the range.
Six eight off.
It's a good price. Yeah, that's a two point three X open. It's much different when it's gonna change. How, how many pips out is this? We could be a pip and a half wider.
One pip more.
Yeah.
Still don't care, yeah, I mean.
Well, you don't have to care, but I see him only opening two, I'm in there.
Eight five. But your, your difference is like you can play it since, right? If you wanted, there's nothing here. Alright. Oh, I think.
Raise it on, like six.
Yeah.
Too small.
Do you bet or do you check? This feels like a check to me.
I'm checking versus a limp car because they just limp so much high card junkie, like all, he's a little bit like, he's got like queen four suited in range, he's limping, right? Like he shouldn't even have that in opening range, but when they limp, they got way more queens than they should.
Second.
I, I guess it's true, but if he has like queen four, does he have king four? You notice he has.
Yeah, yeah, no, but we're ahead of all that.
Right, but.
Arnie only betting top pair here.
Jack X, nine X, I mean, I think you can.
That might be good, but I like to check because.
He's not folding nine X or jack X to a bets, we're just building a pot out of position with a marginal hand.
Yeah, I don't like a bet here. I think it's more of a.
I've been hurt too much.
Could probably check that, yeah, for sure.
Yeah, that's the thing, right? It's easy to get hurt here.
Like they even got way more offsuit, like he could, he could have like queen nine O here and just fucking do it, right? Like.
Just easily have a queen here.
Yeah, I mean, he certainly can, um.
Or he could have like nine, six of hearts and, he could have nine, six of hearts and raise or something, and what do we do, you know, it's.
Yeah.
I mean, I don't know, I need, I wanna get value from like a limper, like I assume a limper is gonna be, gonna be passive and gonna make calling mistakes, so like, let him not believe you with pocket sevens, let him like, let him say like, geez, I have a gut shot, ten, nine, you know?
I'm with him with the fact that I think most of these players are passive, they won't check raise unless they actually have something really, really good.
Maybe you're right, but I'm, I would just proceed with caution here.
Yeah, and I think if they're like, what's our bed sizing there if we get a top pair?
Now you want small ball.
That would second.
Oh, this is spicy one coming up, uh, next here.
This is as much of his check as he can get.
Yeah, it is a marginal hand.
Just like you, if you wanna have any tens in your betting range, like one with a backdoor flush and of course ace ten, you know, is really good, because he's gonna cost me his highs, you cool him, sometimes if you.
Rather bet like ten jack, to be honest.
Yeah.
Well, ten jack is just has a, just a mountain of equity. Yeah.
That's a little bit big of a size there. I would make it mine.
I mean, you can, it's actually not that bad, we're so deep.
It's like three point five basically.
Yeah, it's a tiny bit big, but it's not.
I, uh.
Yeah.
I tanked pretty hard on this one here for a bit here, so.
I probably.
Are we expecting him to turn over ace queen?
I would think here about a fraction of a second.
I'm snapping, I'm gonna, I'm gonna race all his pairs.
This is the truth.
I'm folding and calling with the suited.
Oh my goodness.
I'm gonna re-buy.
I need a read in this guy, it's just like really blasting off like V pip over thirty or something.
No, this was, this was, they hadn't really played many hands.
Well, and rebuy.
The church?
Yeah.
Pocket eight, pocket nine, pocket ten, shit like that.
But if we just get shown jacks, it's the thing.
Yeah, this was the big turning point in this tournament here for me.
Yeah.
It's like a break even call if he shows us Jack's face up, because we're getting like.
Exactly.
Five percent pot odds, so it's kinda like, with a little I C M, it's kind of a losing call.
Or if you think his range is a bunch of pairs, it's an easy fold, like he's not really jamming worse than his king, so we're flipping or crushed, right?
We're not quite flipping, we're a little behind versus all the pairs, but like twos and threes, they can get counterfitted, but it's still like, I just, I just whatever, I click, I'm like, this is dumb, I'm calling, then I'll re-buy if I have to.
Yeah, I mean, if you made it nine instead of, uh, eleven, I mean, isn't, I don't know, I think this is a fold with that kinda jam. But now, with the, obviously the bigger you make it with your three bet, the tougher it is.
You gotta run it, some, some people are gonna have kings, okay, sure. Some people are.
Have to run it.
Back off. But some other guys are gonna show you nine, eight suited here, guys.
Nah, not.
Like, the read, you know, like his, his read was already like, he hasn't been playing that many hands, it's also, you know, it's different than if there was already a four bet to twenty and then a jam to a hundred, the pot odds are so much better there. Here, it's.
I was gonna say, this is a nine X pot jam.
Yep.
It's like, it's so much money. We have so much invested, then we have to call so much.
Or like if you three bet to ten and he bets fifty, it's just a very, it's a very different pot odds, um.
Yes, I agree.
I think against the range I'm expecting to see, I think this is like break even slash a bit of a.
Never calls.
There it is. Even the solver, and the solver expects me to have bluffs and like, I'm not convinced.
Losing eighteen big blinds per hundred LP, we out there putting.
You fish, look, I said fold the offsuit, call the suited.
Well, hold on, let's see their jamming range. Let's see how realistic it is to what, like, what's he jamming? Cause I think people are probably jamming wider than.
Queens and jacks.
Ace, king and kings, I'm, and now if you put in queens, jacks, tens, nines, it's much different.
Yeah.
Ace king's gonna get in there, I think.
Yeah, but I'm not really expecting him to have like a lot of nines and tens, like.
I see.
I see it.
What do you mean, Tim? People show me nine, eight suited here, king seven.
It's so random on GG, like there are some people that will just jam there, right? So.
So you need a read to call with ace king off here.
Okay, okay, maybe, maybe that's fun.
If I think like he, you know, at, at any frequency of showing up with like ace queen or worse, then like sure, I'm, I'm jamming the call button, you know?
They're jamming range, honestly, guys, it's never that.
They're jamming range.
They're not jamming a range.
They haven't won, believe it or not, I've seen it a lot. Like they, they could show you like ninety suited here. Ah, some players, right?
Country of origin is important. Well, not really, it's just fun, so.
This was, it was a Canadian, I think it was.
Ah, for sure then.
They, it's like, for sure.
It's way out of line.
Three and a half.
I think this is like a pure limp at this step. I don't hate raising as an exploit.
I think it's limp call, right? We were too deep.
Mixes, I think.
We don't have much raising here.
No, but yeah, if they're passive, you gotta raise, honestly.
Yeah, there weren't many people that were check raising at this point, or doing, uh, much depending.
This is too wide.
Yeah. Maybe a little bit.
Yeah, this deep especially.
Well, we were only six handed at this point too. And I've got.
Still hijack.
Yeah.
Well, this is that spot where I think you wanna bet one big blind.
Uh, I definitely like betting the flop.
Yeah. Throw it down. Oh wait, what happened? It was a chop, right?
Top it.
Yeah, chop.
Little delayed, uh, chip distribution action there.
Uh, you can lead this.
Yeah.
Nah, I don't know.
Maybe not, the dews four or five, you need like three six here, it's a bit rare.
If you had a diamond or a maybe, you could start leading more, but.
I'm sure it has, it has some leading frequency.
I like leading this hand, cause it's like garbage, I don't even wanna check call.
We got a six here, the upper hand, so what, what?
Yeah, I know.
We don't have five, two or four, two, I don't think, so it's like, which then.
Suited, we do.
Yeah.
I don't know. You're dying.
Pocket fives, we have pocket twos, we have pocket fours, we have five, four, we have five, two, we have three, six, we have ace, three.
Well, look at this, he does lead thirty percent. Look at this, look at Arnie.
With that hand?
I don't even know what he's doing here.
Nice, I like it, a little bit big, I think, but a.
Too big though, right?
Yeah, I probably should have, probably been about maybe two and a half ish there.
Yeah.
I, I just found like on these boards, what in the tournaments I've been playing, um, against some of the, the earlier positions that, you know, they, they don't really defend adequately.
I think it's a good word.
The GTO play, but the shorter you get, the more of a thing it is. Also, the more connected, the more of a thing it is. That's why I like the, the. Dews four is a little bit less, so.
I really started to have a leading range out of position.
It's fine.
I've really been trying to focus on my, my blind play.
I like check raise better.
Oopsie, that's a bad one.
A blast, oh, I love it.
You had blast here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We don't have diamonds, we have like a lot of threes here still. I think it's, we have nine, it's one of our better bluffs.
Did we check turn?
Yeah, oh, we did check turn, yeah.
Yeah, we got no threes, right?
Yeah, I'll have plenty of threes that check, the check raise on the ace.
Oh, the one you're blasting the mouth is diamond too.
Can you, can you change the height to what we have?
Instead of. I'm not blasting diamonds, it's weird.
I have a tough time looking, finding like strategies when it's like that.
Yeah, you can fix it. I've just carried seventy hands we had, like, I did.
Yeah, if you try normalized, I think it splits the difference a little bit.
Don't have anything here, but if we do, uh, six, nine here is bluffing sometimes, right? I'll spot something like that. What's the merit of bluffing a six, nine? Like, why pick a six, nine?
Cause it can't win.
I just figured he had quite a capped range if he's calling on the flop and then he's checking back the ace, which is a great card for him.
We have nine.
Unless, unless I, and then I've, I've got basically almost no showdown.
Yeah, it's a minus.
We don't block anything that continues on the flop.
You unblock diamonds, which is.
And yeah, he's capped when he doesn't bet the turn.
But what three, um, checks the turn?
A lot of my threes, probably checking like thirty percent of my threes.
The turn is bad thing now, I don't sure.
Yes, yeah.
The only, the only one is the nutted three, the six, three.
Ace, three, six, three.
Everyone popped on the brakes when, when we saw the ace, but actually we need to.
I probably should have continued.
Yeah, on the ace, we need to continue, it seems.
I'm big.
It's not intuitive, because the ace guns are against the early positions, so it would freeze my action, but now I see that, the three.
So we docked, how's it, how does the ace change if we had check raise flop?
Check.
But it slows us down, right?
How do you check raise a flop? You don't really check raise with this one, do you? All right, we need the backdoor flush, no, for check raise?
I made check raising, so just hit the check raise and see how we, uh, behave with an ace.
Flush, it's always doing it.
Just wanna see how we behave when the ace hits the turn after our arranged check races, I'm not really worried about our hands.
Okay, and then call. And then the ace of hearts. Same.
That's more.
Yeah. When you check raise, it blasts even more. How many trees do we check raise? All of them? Okay.
I guess it's enough.
Hmm, so you gotta bet turn here.
Yeah, definitely.
Get away with the river bet, river over bet too? That's fancy, I like it.
Uh, they got, this guy was pretty passive, like he wasn't really doing much of anything.
So it must just because the ace completes the draws, honestly, is the only reason I guess we get to do that. I would fold.
Yeah, that's a mistake.
Yeah, I agree.
Probably stops here, right? You don't call the river.
No, I, yeah.
Uh.
Old.
Yeah.
You could three bet maybe ace, eight suited sometimes, but oh, this is really, this is really out of line.
Well, you know, when you put the, the putting aggression, it's not too crazy, cause you have a chance to win.
Yeah, I mean.
It's just too low in range, like king ten off is like.
What do you think is, uh, like king ten off suit? It's probably three betting here?
Maybe slivers, it's not hundred percent, we can't.
Jack for sure.
Yeah, exactly, king jack is like the one, king ten is like, if you wanna get spicy, things are just too bad.
Yeah.
It's hard, it's hard to tell in the hold a manager here, but I definitely take good notes on a lot of players and see how their, their opening range is. Um, where people are opening quite a bit, but, um, this one is definitely loose.
You can expand your range, but you wanna like, just do it more often with like king ten, king jack.
Oh yeah, no, a hundred percent, I agree here, but.
Maybe your ace.
In game, this guy might have been folding a lot to three bets, right? When he was opening and stuff, right? So.
They can put.
I, I, this wouldn't be a hand I normally three bet on the button. This would have been exploitable, an exploitative play.
Okay. Yeah, we get punished.
Yeah, we do get punished.
Oh, well. Okay, so this is a good three bet, I think.
Yeah.
Uh, you just call.
I mean, calling's fine too, right? I mean, I don't like, I don't.
It's, it's, it was under the gun.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's, it's nice about. What's nice about three bettnesses, you get clean information, they four bet, you got an easy fold, when you call, you gotta call down on a side words and it's, it's turkey, it's dicey.
Yeah, forty percent three bets, so. Also, it just plays a lot better when you three bet, cause if you, if you just call here, you hit your ace, where do you stand on the hand? You're against under.
Yeah, I guess about, I was gonna call one ace ten, it'd probably be, wanna call the suited one.
Yeah, one you three bet, and he just calls, he caps himself a lot, he never has, his king never has, probably a.
Yeah.
So you're getting rid of a bunch of combos, aces, kings, then if you're at your ace, it's really clean.
And now your tens gets to be a decent kicker.
Yeah. Uh.
You could bet small probably.
I probably bet this one here.
Yeah, small bet, right, Tim?
I think so.
For the ace ten on the flop, no, it's majority to check.
Yeah, you can still bet some. That's if they, that's if they're protecting their checking range, if they're not, if they don't ever have jacks plus here or tens plus here, I think it bets, uh, infinitely better. Now you don't wanna bluff, I don't think, do we?
Hmm, gotta sorry, gotta showdown.
Yeah, he's, he's gonna have under, he's gonna have some pocket pairs.
Yeah.
But it's just what it is. Uh, now you're probably, nope.
I think this, we just chopped this one, I think.
Yeah, you might win, ace, jack. He should be betting that flop, honestly.
See, when you, you three bet him and you see bad this flop.
I'd probably take it down.
If you three bet, does he defend ace jack off even?
No, he folds.
I don't know, I find a lot of people defend with ace, jack and ace lower buy-ins.
Up in the air, whatever he does it, but.
You gotta call.
Um. You gotta call once, you say?
Yeah.
I don't mind folding here.
Yeah, I don't fold any pairs.
Against this size, though, like.
Calling is probably fine.
I think it's a, I think it's a call.
Jane.
Bing?
Well, if you know you're gonna hit the four, you should call.
Uh, thinking about raising turn, I mean, it's just such a small bet, like, how do we get the most money out of this guy?
Yeah, I, I certainly wanted to keep his bluffs in and didn't really wanna scare him away.
You gotta help people arise a river, no?
He should be betting bigger here, probably when he bets, uh, like he's just clicking buttons, I think.
Oh, definitely.
Hopefully he hits a queen or he has a jack that he can't fold.
And I think I, I do a smaller bet trying to get called.
I mean, I like that size.
Thought I might have in game, a little bit smaller.
He didn't have shit.
I think you need to go very big here, not small.
Oh, definitely, but I think it was just in game, I was just like, what am I gonna get? I didn't really have him on much of anything with his, his bet sizing there, so I was just sort of open.[1733.55]
Which size does his range bet on a turn just for my own? Cause I feel like that's, he could size up turns.
He should probably release full pot or bigger with his sevens and his jacks. Like if he's got ace jack there.
Three quarter pot maybe.
Yeah. As a four would be a brick.
He's checking or overbetting?
Yeah, it is overbetting, yeah. So like, it's, that's why man, his bet size is like weird. They're just like trying to get, this is how they bluff a lot. These people get to the turn, they don't know what to do and they just put a little bit of chips in, hope you fold.
But I guess I probably should have raised him on the turn there and he probably calls, I get maybe some more value.
Yeah, like he might have had spades there, right? Or he's got like a, some kind of straight draw, who knows, or just two overs that didn't include a queen, like it's whatever. Small pairs, like they'll do this with like pocket fives, eights, whatever, they should go small, small, hope to get a cheap showdown. They don't know how to play out of position. Instead of just checking flop.
Well, I was surprised that he led as well too on the flop.
Yeah, they oversee, but they don't fucking. Then they're lost. Yeah, I would, oh, I would have jammed.
Uh, yeah, definitely should have.
Yeah, I mean, I would jam here.
Why?
Because it's fifteen bigs effective, put it in. I don't wanna let call a jam. But it's still a pretty good hand. Hundred percent call, huh?
I don't understand why you wanna jam.
Fifteen bigs?
Yeah, if I had an ace, I would have jabbed. But here, I think it's just my limp call.
It can't be that far out. Alright, so whatever. So this is another spot, so like, it limps good, cause it now, what do they, what do we do if they raise? We're calling this, right? Yeah, well, they're not gonna just raise, they're gonna either jam or call the length like way too wide. What's that?
If he jam.
I don't think he has a not all in raise, like I think it's just jam over a limp, no? Okay, he does, he does.
Does all kinds of things. So, say he jams, we just fold. How we call it off?
Yeah, see, like people aren't, as I'm saying, like they're not jamming a polarized raise like that, so I like to just snap it in myself. I got a really good hand, wanna run it. If they fold, it's fantastic. If they call, I don't care, I got a pretty good hand. And that's that.
I don't know about your strategy, Ken.
Alright, well.
I like GTO a lot.
Okay, um, my GTO is fine against GTO players, but I'm telling you, if the small blind just does that with all kind of shit, they're supposed to be jamming. I'd rather just jam. Now you can bet, you don't have no aces, right? But sometimes those passive players do have an ace, cause they wanna hit it on the flap and then jam.
That's fine, right? Or is that a bit too loose?
I mean, it's whatever, you can, I mean.
Uh, I think almost any suited hand I'm gonna be raising.
Yeah, I don't hate it, whatever.
Okay, so I wanna usually stick to suited fives. But.
Oh, five, like a queen five or higher?
No, no, the queen is different, right? I'm saying overall, any suited five, I'm gonna play from the bottom.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Like suited fours, like ten four suited, I might not play, and then I think it's fine. Think it's limit.
Yeah, it's queen five, queen four, but I think you're gonna definitely expand here.
I like how you find all the little like edges, and then you push it a little bit, one bit or two, maybe. Yeah. It's good, and then.
Ah, it's pure.
Button, right?
Alright, okay.
So, um.
Check this one.
I think my favorite is check raising.
I would just chuck call.
Well, at this tag now, why would you just check though?
Why not?
Because it's a, you're thirty effective top pair to kicker, it's a great spot to get chips in, no?
I mean, yeah, I guess it would be. I would still just mostly chuck call.
For me, what's he getting chips in with, with twenty, on a king ten five check raise sport?
Maybe could have a, a worse king.
Yeah, king, queen.
Maybe a ten.
Queen jack, a pocket seven.
He's got a king nine, he's got like king eight suited, king seven suited. But then all three bet their king, there's uh low suited kings nearly enough, so they have a bit more than they usually. I can think king seven, king eight, might three bet there.
And he goes for a bet, a little betty bet thirty two percent. Is that a good check raise with king jack off? Not so much. Machine says do not check raise.
Ace king, king queen.
Well, I guess with the jack, we could be blocking some of his queen jacks and stuff.
He wants to, he prefers queen jack to king jack.
That's the block.
But how often are we supposed to check it? Let's see. That's the thing, we're supposed to bet it all the time.
Yeah, we're betting a lot more than us all here.
One thing you need to remember in these kind of scenarios, you open, somebody flats in position, the worst board for them is king heart. The best for, the best board is always gonna be king.
Yeah, definitely.
Cause he doesn't have his king, he doesn't have kings, he doesn't have like very much strong kings, and you got them all.
There are a lot of uh hands and cards that can come that can change everything, I think. Like a ten, an ace, a nine, uh, a queen. Yeah, so that's why I think we have to bet or not.
Yeah, I agree.
We do have to have a check sometimes though, so like it's not bad, you gotta bet um a good amount, but you gotta do checks on.
Yeah, so what kings do you check though?
Well, if you look at the solution, you're not checking a lot of kings.
I don't think you're checking a lot.
They mix.
They're mixing, right? So you gotta.
Yeah, but you're, you're checking more of the lower kickers.
Right.
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah.
See, if you bet on the flop, you're probably able to play for stacks here. As now, you, you're kind of you gotta play for twelve, thirteen, right?
What are we doing at river? What's the optimal bedside?
I should have probably checked there to see if he'd go for it.
I'm wondering, yeah, I'm wondering if we bet smaller or check. I don't really know. Might just, we're jam, like I don't, I absolutely have no idea how to play that, cause like he's got kings. So we might just jam. I mean, doesn't have many of them, because there's obviously three taken up, but.
Yeah, you can do no wrong, you're majority betting sixty percent pot.
Uh, thirty five percent. Actually, that hand's even betting eleven percent the most.
Yeah, I kinda like a small
A smaller bet.
Bet that looks blocky, maybe inducing a, a, a bluff raise.
Yeah, and sometimes you gotta have.
More money in that way. Whereas if you just check for the same reason, you're not gonna get as much money and your raise is gonna get folded.
Sometimes you gotta have some nuts in your black bet range, I'm just never sure when.
But one, one, one street. Think after one street checks through, you don't really have any more room to check the nuts.
I didn't say check, I said block bet. I never know when to block bet the nuts. I know you have to, some frequency to protect your black bet range, but I just, I'm not sure how to construct that well yet.
I think when your nuts blocks a lot of his value. That's a good time to consider it.
Unblocks potential bluffs then, right?
Exactly, that's the same. Different way to say, I think, the same.
Yeah, yeah, same thing, probably, right?
Oh, this was, this is a big ad here in the tournament. I think this was right before the final table.
When you guys are playing these tournaments, do you, do you mark in your hold a manager um key points, like when the game dynamic changes, like, so you have a sense of when you're at the bubble and when you're at three tables and.
I always do.
I, I, I should start doing that more often. I, I just take a lot of notes on showdowns with um villains.
I have tags for soft bubble, uh, I have tags for end of late range, soft bubble, um, bubble. Then like final table bubbles and final table, and then like if I get a spot, as I see I'm a spot, I'm not sure of, I make a quick note. Note how many are left, and I already have my tags, so I know where I'm at in the tournament. It takes a couple of seconds. I don't play a lot of tables though, so it's easy for me.
But Ken, you cannot do this on Gigi, can you?
Uh, no, you cannot.
Nope.
So, okay. Bet kind of. I'm not sure if it's a big bet or not, right? It's like under our spot, so it's kind of small. So, I think this sizing is really good, actually.
I was just trying to get some value, some calls. Here, so.
So the thirty checks, you size up, that's really good.
Well, this is nice.
You just call or you?
I, I tanked here for a bit and I was trying to see figure what he might have.
So.
I figured I had the nuts here. Um, majority of the time here, so, and then I, I basically came down to, I put him on a set. Or he had a kink. And then I basically just jammed.
Oh.
Yeah, I figured, I don't think he would be really doing this unless he had um maybe like a seven or a four and clubs, but then with small blind, range is so tight there that uh I just closed my eyes and shoved it in.
Yeah, I really like it. Get rid of all the bluffs.
Yeah, you're like.
To approach this, okay, is that you're still in position on the river, so if you call here. And then he has another chance to put the chips in bad on the river. But also, like, he could have a club, and then if he breaks, maybe he doesn't play it.
Yeah, like, if this guy's like ace seven of clubs, he's gonna put his chips in now, and if he breaks, he's not, so I, I don't know, I don't hate this.
So I actually, uh, this comes up in cash a, a little bit, and, and the thinking that I have there, and I don't know if it applies is uh, the third club, I'm not really afraid of the clubs as a flush, as much as I'm afraid of it as a scare card that will shut him down on the river, and I can see other cards here like a seven, I think, you know, something that kind of completes the low straight. Might, might shut him down, and so I think you gotta get your money in now.
Ah.
Yeah, this was a good reg, and I don't think he was doing this light. Um, we had been battling quite a bit.
Also, it's a small raise, right? So it's strength to keep you in.
And I'm not, for the record, I'm not scared of a flush. I think they'll put their chips in when they do this. They like, if they have a flush, well, they like enough, they're gonna put it in, whereas when they break, you ain't, break it, you ain't getting their money.
Yeah, Ken, let me just, let me just reemphasize, I, I'm not afraid of the flush, I'm afraid of the flush scaring him away from putting more money in. On the river, so I wanna get the money in on the.
Alright, right.
I like that reasoning a lot, Josh. The seven, look at this.
Oh, beautiful. So, cause like if a club comes in and you jam, what does he do with his threes?
Probably calling, but.
Probably calls.
You're right, it's a cleaner as it is now. Okay, so I'd fold here? I would not limp here.
Yeah, I agree.
I love the bat.
I bet some, I bet again, he's gonna have clubs sometimes, like I don't think he has many aces.
Thing is, you'd be perfect with B here.
I would jam.
Really good for you, you can get a four, you can get a nine. And when the four, oh, he's really short. Probably checking is a lot better. I love the trick. Check is perfect. And then, yeah, now you gotta bet for some.
But that's it in the machine, see how we put it turn. Do you think we check back, really?
Yeah, because he's too short.
He don't have no aces though, does he?
If it was a deeper hand, forty big blind, fifty big blind, sixty big blind, we pick up a quickly, I think it's a great barrel.
Yeah, I guess at that stack depth, I probably should have barreled, because I picked up equity, but I was thinking in game that I didn't want to like bet like two and a half, three, and then he jams for ten, and then I'm sort of like, well, I've got you know, I've got eight clean outs, and maybe, I don't think my eight or seven are good.
Better range, I look at some other hands though, like I, I just wanna try to get like a five or a ten to fold, honestly, and even a six they might have on the turn.
The thing is, if you're gonna bet the turn, you're not gonna bet small, you're gonna
Probably jam, probably jam there, yeah.
I said jam. I mean, say hi, whatever, he's got lax aces, we have the, all, all the better aces, like you just box them up.
And if we do check on the turn, what cards are we bluffing on the river? Any non-club?
I don't know.
It was a six.
Six diamonds. Got more aces than I thought. Oh, although you have it full height, so.
So this is as, as, as fourteen, let's see, seventeen.
Well, he was shorter than that, right?
See, seventeen, we got some ace seven suited. We don't wanna barrel if we don't have the, the, the front door, fr- front door flush. And then deeper. Let's look at forty. Forty big blinds will start to barrel without the backdoor.
Well, we, we have eight, seven, yeah.
But what was it at fifteen? That's about what we were playing.
Oh, but it doesn't barrel if we have any club with the eight, seven. Do we have a club?
Nope.
Yeah.
So you barrel when you don't block the flush or two. So six is pretty good for our hand. It's a thing, right? But at this tag depth, you correctly recognize that it's a check. You pretty well, aren't you?
I've been getting better, man. I've been really enjoying these classes and doing some studying on the poker coaching. So. I should have probably raised that a little bit bigger in the big blind there, to the limbs.
Yeah.
Sometimes I just like to see flops with uh good suited hands.
This is sad.
So one thing I learned, okay, whenever you have, you're on the turn. And you have a draw that's gonna struggle to do well against a raise. It's probably better to check and then call. So this, to me here is like the same kind of spot.
Yeah.
I wouldn't leave here.
Too high up in range to bluff, I think.
And then, yeah, you're just in a pickle, or if you don't hit the diamond or an ace.
So you'll, you'll probably bluff like ace eight, ace obviously, like ace eight, ace five, ace four, ace three, maybe like ace nine, but you start getting too high up in range with this.
So do you, do we like the call when he raises?
No.
I probably should have folded to this raise.
It's close, not sure. But for sure, it's never a bet.
No, you can't fold to this.
Nah, yeah.
That thing into two players, and then he, this guy is not closing the action and he raises.
I didn't even notice we were multi-way.
Which is like getting direct odds though.
Once he, once he folds, we're getting direct odds to draw to flush.
Yeah, exactly, I mean. And like, does he ever have a lower flush, maybe?
For sure. I mean, maybe, maybe, I should.
Well, we got in prime odds too, if we hit, we get another bet on the river.
But the question is, even if the flush comes in, do I get paid? I don't know.
Sometimes.
You don't, you'll find out. You don't fold this, you crazies.
But it does make sense, it would have been better for me to just check and then call, cause I'd probably call like.
Are you even betting here, Eggman?
No.
No, no, but he bet, and I'm saying with the raise, I think you gotta cut your losses.
Alright, so Josh, Josh, walk me through it real quick. Okay, so when he raises you, like, we are applying pretty solid fundamental theory here, like he is raising into two players, correct? Like, what does this say? What, what is this buy-in, like a three dollar thing or something? To fifteen, okay, so do you think he's ever making mistakes here and raising hands he shouldn't like? Okay, let's say he has nine, ten of hearts. Is he ever doing it with hands like that here?
Let me stop you right here, cause he's in the sandwich. So he has no raising range.
This guy don't eat sandwiches, Louis. He doesn't eat sandwiches.
He, he doesn't eat any of my sandwiches.
That's an assumption that he knows how to play multi-way too.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, Joey, he doesn't eat sandwiches.
Yeah, no.
This is a value raise. Well, sure, but like, okay.
I start with the assumption that this is a value raise.
Sure, it's value, but is it like, is eight, nine considered value to this guy? Eight, nine of diamonds could be value for this guy? Like, a lot of what he would be perceived as value.
What you're saying is you'd never be here.
I would play check, I would save myself.
Never be here, but if you'd be here, you'd call.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement that it's a check, but the point is, seeing that you bet and he raised. Is it? Is it a call?
You're drawing to the nuts with good odds and implied odds.
Yeah, 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 I think it's a call all day, I think it's crazy to fold like.
And the, and an ace might be good.
So it's seven to win twenty-five, right? Without any implied assets, so just to be the most conservative.
It's right here, twenty-five percent pot odds.
Yeah, and so if if your your flush is, doesn't get you twenty-five percent. Your flush plus your ace is probably exactly-ish twenty-five percent.
To get the bet on the river too.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, well. Well, I'm being as conservative, I'm just being as cynical possible, so.
You should be, yeah, I agree, it's good to prove.
So I'm saying he's good, I need at least an ace and that may work, uh but I, in the diamond will work. And with diamonds, like I've got nine outs, it's like eighteen percent, I need twenty-five percent. That's where I go, that's why I'm asking the question, like, I think that this is a closer call, if not a fold, then everybody's making it sound like.
Well, he could have just been exploitively targeting me like a lot of times. You know, that seven's a very good card for me in my range, I'm gonna have a lot of two pair. I'm gonna have some open enders, I might have some straights, right, where I'm bleeding small. And he's showing a lot of strength there, um raising.
I think the more interesting question is, what do we do if we hit the ace? Do we do a block bet or check?
Yeah, actually, I mean, a block bet wouldn't be crazy.
I would check.
I do think it's an interesting question, Joey, I would imagine equity shifts, you probably do some kind of block thing.
You're against AP.
Yeah, maybe you check to him then.
I think this is a call.
Really so open for me, early position there, the threes.
Wait, what what were the stacks? Did you go back to the last hand?
He opens.
I think that might be a fold with all those other short stacks.
Oh, hundred percent, yeah, like I said, it was quite a loose open.
Uh Arnie likes to go for it.
I don't know, at this point, I was chip leader at the table and I was just, I was raising, I was opening quite wide. Putting pressure.
You could lead here, can you not? Multi-way, maybe not, right? Heads up.
I, it is a good plot for me to lead with my range, but uh I think I probably just check this.
The four pairs, another thing you could do is bet here.
Yeah, you could bet like two there, that's a bit big for a multi-way pot.
Definitely agree.
Hmm, do you need to follow up here? Put the guy in. Think so. Anybody putting the guy in, I am.
I'm not too sure what I did here.
What was the turn action, I'm sorry?
That big call.
Okay, I bet sixty percent when the board paired and then a call.
If we bet small, I put him in, I'm not sure with with him calling the big bet. Cause there was somebody active in the hand.
Yeah, the the jacks effectively a brick, I don't know, I would put him in, I think.
You get ace high to fold, you get king high to fold, you get better queens to fold.
He's gonna have like eight, nine here sometimes, he's gonna be in trouble with like six X, seven X is even gonna have a hard time sometimes. He could have diamonds, even though we're blocking diamonds.
See, Arnie.
Feel like you've got pocket five.
Ace five, ace five could make a lot of sense, yeah.
And you know what? We're more than double the next stack, so yeah, it makes sense, cause. The, any chip we have worth over thirty-five big blinds is less valuable than the first thirty-five we have.
Yeah, once again, Arnie, I like your lines.
I've I've really been focusing on my big blind and small blind play. Cause it it's, I think it's super important.
It is. I agree.
So mu- so much EV. In in, cause you're always defending in your big blind and.
Difficult spot, I feel like I wanna raise with this.
Uh, I think you could probably raise or play, this might actually like limp raise.
I'm more like king seven with the embracing.
Yeah.
I was just more in game here, I was like, we're two big stacks, I didn't really wanna play a big pot out of position.
Are we, are we anywhere near uh like ICM at this point or?
Um, I don't, I'm not too sure where we are with hand, this one is old hand forty-two, so. But halfway, yeah.
Yeah, I would agree with that then, would the other big stack keep the?
If I was in, if I was covering, like, if I was against like a twenty-five or twenty, I'm probably raising that pure.
Yeah, I think I can agree with that, that's not that.
I could lose. Never lose.
Sometimes lose.
Still check. There's no merit in betting here, cause we don't get better kings to fold. Ace size are top pair. We'll have a draw that struggle against a raise. We could be good at showdown sometimes. Don't like it better.
Nah, you gotta fold there.
We struggle, right? That's why we don't bet. We can maybe like continue in the hand if we don't bet. Now it's just like that. So one thing I would work on, Arnie. You're you're calling turn raise a little bit too wide. Because people are not gonna be as aggressive as you are. Nowhere near it. So like you might think people are playing games with you, but they're just half cards.
Yeah. That is, that is one of the things I I do struggle with.
Well, you might not need cards yourself, right? But. Well, this is a little wide, I would fold.
Yeah, big wide, I'm surprised I I called here.
Yeah, I'd fold here, it's also you're getting deeper in the tournament a little bit, so. Starts to be ICM-ish a little bit more, and then it's big mediums, no, big stack against big stack. You wanna avoid that a little bit. I think that turn here.
Yeah, no, this is pretty bad.
I think check raising turns sexy as fuck, well.
What do you say, Jedi?
Check raging turns just beautiful in on this term.
Yeah, maybe, right?
Yeah, I think I love chick raising that turn there. With nine of spades.
That was pretty, that had, this sounds pretty spewy.
Well, no, I I think I like the river bet on on the end.
Yeah, yeah, I do.
I just figured he was pretty capped, he's just calling there.
Straights and a flush.
Well, nice little play, yeah.
I like that you went for it on the river.
Yeah.
I I I do tend to blast off sometimes where I just, in game, I feel that he's pretty, pretty weak. And I go for it, sometimes it works out, sometimes it doesn't, and I regret it.
This not a spot where we range that.
I would.
Yes.
Love in our hands.
One big blind.
Oh, now we're in the box, gonna fold. Oh, that's right, to play kings. Yeah, sure.
I I probably jammed here.
Uh, you should just call, but.
Just call, see if you could trap the other player to come in.
Big bet, I think this is good. Lab complete, so not so good anymore. Check, check, that's fine, hit the nuts on the river. Uh, do you raise here? I don't think so, I kinda want to, but.
Reverse that size, I probably just go for a click or something, you know. Maybe it's never the flush for that, for a block bet size.
Yeah, such a small size, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I still can't believe uh he was in there with fives.
Well. Was looking for a five.
Well, yeah, and that bet on the end makes sense, his fives can't win, so he's gotta try to bluff you, but he should have bet larger.
This is a punt here.
Well, how do you construct a four-bet bluffing range?
I I should have known better in game, this was a good regular, and this was, I think we're down, I think maybe three. Three tables? At this point, so I I should have probably just called or folded.
That's a good regular, I don't mind ripping it reverse the fish, I prefer folding.
Think if we put it in the machine, it's not gonna say you make a big mistake here.
Yeah. This one just really hurt. It was tough, but at the same time, too, it just sort of, you wanna sort of protect yourself a little bit, yeah.
Just because you ran into ace king doesn't mean it was a punt.
The machine, if it was pure chip EV, eighty percent jam feels pretty good, man.
Can you run it, can you run that with ICM?
Uh, yes.
It just one, it is that point in the tournament where you're running good and then, you know, it then it's just like deflating, right? Cause. You go from.
This is, this is what I call a scam, my friend, you're supposed to put it in.
It's just one of those things where it's just like.
Here, if you play well, you get scanned, you know, there's this liver of calls here, and this is a non-chip EV, this is a non-ICM solution. Uh, say we have three tables left, uh we got an average of twenty. Twenty, right? So three table, twenty average, and then we're the big stack.
Jam's probably better.
Low jack. So if we could have.
We got him covered.
Then the button has to be, I think this is, I'm gonna open from the low jack. And then, which one was it? Uh, the button had eighteen.
He had thirty.
Ah, that's a thing, right? You need to go a bit deeper. So.
Well, you might not have to go deeper, cause he raised small, he only clicked it.
But no, he he three Xed.
I'm sorry, T T A Wizard only uses a click. Well, you want the SPR to be similar.
Yeah, because you have to be.
Okay, um, for what, uh, actually, Martine is on vacation until the eleven.
Not sure, DZ, but sure.
But you see, his queen really mixes down in that situation. But I think you gotta be, I I like the fifty-twenty over this uh thirty-five, thirty-three.
Actually, if he goes, this is better, because if he clicks it, then the SPR is gonna be bigger and not smaller, so this is actually a good solution.
You had one where it was fifty-twenty like, uh.
We have right now is.
I think it's scrolling down a lot more. That one. Down, down, down. You were the low jack is fifty. And the button was eighteen, I think.
No, the button has.
No, I'm just, yeah, well, I guess that jams, huh? I guess if it's that small, huh?
That's what I guess it makes us, yeah, more.
It's very close, very close to do here with.
I probably do this in every situation, it's just. At, I was, you know, you play so well, and then you run into ace king and, you know.
Yeah, yeah, but as you see, as it gets a little deeper than that eighteen shown there, it starts mixing more flats and folds.
What is the three betting range of the button there on last three tables?
His ace high blockers, king high.
If he doesn't have uh a lot of uh three bets that are in the chart, then uh we should play tighter there.
Yeah.
I s- I think.
Well. That, that's a bit of a misnomer, cause if they are tight, if it's a tight player, they tend to fold tight as well.
Yeah, so they don't three bet.
So where you think like they should be like maybe three bet calling with maybe like ace queen? They'll fold. I've seen some fold ace kings here for a show.
So this, this open is bottom of the range, right?
Yeah.
And then calling the three that is just like, that's a fold to me.
Yeah, I just, it's just so small, so I was like, let's see a flop.
Yeah, but he had, he doesn't have much left behind.
Yeah, no, hundred percent. It's, I probably shouldn't even have opened that, the the king eight there. Um, at such a short stack, um, just to avoid, you know.
Bunch of jacks.
Yeah, I guess it's okay.
Oh, pocket dudes, never lose, what are we gonna do? Just call? Check.
Shouldn't we be shoving that? Oh, wait, no, we're, okay, never mind.
No blocker.
Uh, this feels savage, but I like it.
I don't know, it's, he he should be betting almost pure on that flop with me having such a short stack and the threes. Infinitely better for me here, so.
This is duly madness kind of.
That was sort of my thinking in game here, but I probably should have bet smaller. Um, and probably still would have got the same fold here, but.
Oh my god, he calls?
Yeah, I wouldn't bet here. Oh, my goodness, you go for it.
I mean, like, now that we're here. That's how I rationalize it to myself a game.
Now that we're here.
Well, no, I I I put.
He probably has king jack, it's okay.
I don't know, sometimes in game, if I'm in a hand, I, you know, I'll blast off. Just go for it, right?
Limb check, check, check. That one foul. Check, check, Jack nine.
I definitely. Doug River again, me, cause you have a lot more ace, I mean, queen has good, so.
On the ace, right?
Uh, yeah, we limp, we limp, and he checks back, so we have, we have a lot more ace six in small band than him, don't we? But I mean, it's irrelevant when you beat, when he's showing down Jack I anyway.
Yeah, but on ace ten, ten board. To call king highs.
Hmm, maybe, yeah. Yeah, depends how good he is, though, right?
Yeah. And it is, it is a micro, so. They probably don't even know that.
Yeah, probably, they probably just folding like pocket seven.
I should have probably raised this pre with the ten-nine.
No, 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 it's fine to limp here.
Find a limp here, I was thinking sort of, I did wanna get blown off my equity.
Yeah, it's fine to limp, I believe. But here seems out of line.
Somebody open limp, uh this is perfect to just slip behind.
But calling here, I'm not sure at all. Why I'm always folding?
With the pot odds I'm getting. Uh, gut shot. I don't know, it was probably pretty bad call.
Thing is, i- if it go, you face one bet, there's no resistance, you have the backdoor flush to go with it. Maybe it's a good spot to take. But when it goes back call, one of them has equity here. Alright, so if you don't hit your gut shot, like your ten is probably not good, your nine is not good. So you're, you're really drawing to an eight.
Yeah, I agree.
Something like that, so when it goes back call, I'm out, if it goes bad. Then you have a backdoor flush, who knows, right? But with with this pattern here in front of me, I'm folding. Uh, both have an ace. Hey, that's not necessary, right? You don't need to put chips in the pocket.
Yeah, I agree.
I know, you you guys are trying to ladder and kill this guy, and then you win. Now it's a check. But he's gone anyway.
They got jam here.
Boy, pocket eights. What are we supposed to do?
This is close, I think this depends on what the exact ICM is on the hand.
This is not the final table, right?
Uh, no, I do not believe so.
This looks like, I mean, finally, five, five-handed, final table.
This might be like two tables.
Yeah.
Maybe three tables. Maybe three tables if they're breaking stuff up.
Yeah.
No, I mean, I probably jam here.
Chippy V, it's always a jam.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I C M it. Probably call.
I don't.
No, I, I.
Or fold?
Full or jam? Yeah, full or jam, and I said.
Yeah, and then he could be easily a fold here.
I don't know, a lot of times in game, it's like, it's hard to tell, cause I did this, I didn't, I wasn't sure which one we were gonna do. But this guy could have been opening quite a bit too, right?
Yeah.
Um, so a lot of times I'll do in-game exploits here.
Yeah.
So.
I think like if there's a pair to jam, I mean, like it's that one, I feel like.
This was definitely.
Configuration, no? We're pre.
Well, you can jam up.
Probably the very bottom.
Yeah.
I wanna jam this and a couple better as well.
Like, are you on the final table here or is this a?
I think this might be down to two.
Okay.
Yeah, we only have fifty big blinds, so.
Especially though, it's not a P K O, I mean.
More fold equity.
I would bet one on here.
Yep, yep.
Now we're.
And I think this is the start of the final table here.
Alright.
Yeah, so, do you know, um, the other hand, the eight deuce? Suited, if it's F T bubble, there's not, there's no one just jam that, some small blind getting to big, big blind to fold. I'm, I'm jamming any two suited cards here on F T bubble, the big stack, yeah, 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 I'm just jamming any two suited here.
Yep.
I, I don't hate that.
I agree with that.
Yeah.
Max pressure, yeah.
That ace seven might have been a loose open on the final table.
Yeah, definitely. I know, depending, like I had a lot of chips there, so, you know, sometimes I just sort of like to.
So we see that flop villain calls, is this a good card to double barrel?
Flash completes the final table.
Yeah, I think this is pretty good.
I think if it was a king of diamonds, I would say it's a slam dunk double.
Yeah.
Not a hundred percent sure about the flush.
But still, still a double, I think, chippy V?
So, how many of his ace, how many of his spade draws you think he's check raising? Do you think he's playing as conservatively as he needs to versus chip leader?
Never.
I would agree, so I would probably double barrel this.
Yeah, that's, that's good insight, yeah, cause I think he would have raised all of his flush draws there.
For the most part, and like the king's gonna be asymmetrically good for you, and you're gonna get pretty honest feedback, I think.
Yeah.
This is something I've been trying to work into my game more, like, it feels kind of bad doubling off, uh. When the flush starts completing in certain directions.
But the king is too good.
Yeah.
Yeah, the king is such a good starter.
So you're saying, Galen, it does get threw often enough though to double barrel?
It's just a max pressure campaign, Joey. Some of his continues aren't gonna be spade centric. So the spades completing, he's just gonna start over folding components of his range. So like, you know, even like nine X, like if he's got nine, nine, eight of hearts or something.
Nine is not happy when you size up on this turn.
Yeah, exactly. Like, they're just gonna say, they're gonna say, uh, I've got a lot of chips and I don't need to be fighting.
Yeah, I definitely should have double barreled this one when I get there on the.
Did you raise him on the river?
Uh, he checked and I just bet, cause I wanted to get called.
No, it's too small. I agree with him, um, yeah, 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 betting's good, but you could probably be a little greedier with your sizing.
Yeah.
To be honest, he has a, uh, pretty premium bluff catcher. He has a nine with a reasonable spade blocker, like the jacks pretty relevant.
Yeah, no, I agree.
Oh, there's a non-written rule that comes from Matafle, that basically says here, in position to reopen the action, you gotta have a threshold of equity and there's a minimum size you gotta use. And. Alpha is that kind of minimum size. If you're to reopen the action here, you need to bet at least alpha, then your, your hand needs to be good enough to bet at least alpha. Hmm, we call here, what do you do in game on the F T against C P? I'm folding.
Me too.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, um, first under they're gonna open.
Yeah.
I think you're like either gonna do one of two things. I don't think flattings the answer. I think you're either gonna like micro three bet this guy to really put him in the blender or you're just gonna fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Three bet, I like it, whoa.
Oh.
Whoa.
Yeah, please fold here.
This probably should have been a fold a hundred percent here, yeah, yeah.
I think it's, it might be better off to four bet bluff this than.
Yeah, yeah, follow it, both are pretty, pretty gangster, to be fair.
Yeah, in game, I was thinking, you know, I'm gonna be able to straight forward on the flop if I hit my hearts.
Yeah, but keep in mind, people don't bluff enough when they three bet, okay? It's not because you are doing it correctly. Or why that people are doing that to you. So when you call with this kind of hand. This guy on top of you just has jacks and the other one has ace king or ace queen suited. Their, their, their ranges are, they don't have enough bluff.
Yeah, I agree. At least one of them has you dominated.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So.
Oh, the, the, we had a very erratic player.
Getting reported.
You're reporting here, Billy?
I'm, I'm reporting the guy on the right, man, and the guy on the left.
Chip dumping, huh?
Yeah.
No, that, I, 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 yeah, it was, the guy was pretty erratic with the three, four there. He was the same guy that blocked bed with the fives, called my, my big bet on the, on the flop, so.
So to bet here, I think you would wanna have a club?
Yeah, and like high, low kings and queens.
This texture doesn't, doesn't, you don't size up here very much without ace ten or pocket jacks here.
Or like king nine makes a more attractive bet to me, cause like, you know.
Kings to fold sometimes.
Yeah, like king nine or, yeah, it gets like king jack to ask itself hard questions. But here, we only get value if we can get him to fold ace highs or pairs and like, we can get him to fold to his highest, but eh.
Another thing you wanna work on is your, sometimes you're betting too big.
Too big, yeah, that's been a recurring theme here, I have been.
And there's value with his hand, like if he has queen five suited, we just, we just blast him off of it and there's value in hitting that queen when we dominate him.
I, yeah, you can't, I don't think you can call that on the river, not with the final table I C M. It's only one, no, that sucks.
Yeah, that sucks. Yeah.
They're shenanigans.
I thought it was.
I guess if I'm betting the, the flop there, I should probably continue on the turn with the ten.
No.
No?
The top card pairing is not a good card to blast off on.
Yeah, it gives you less tens. And then his weak tens improve. Uh, should we call here? I think so.
Uh.
Hmm.
Oh, not sure about the shove.
I, I figured this guy was, he was gonna bet everything and I put him on ace king, ace queen. King queen.
Yeah, but jacks are in his range, jacks are in his range, um.
Yeah, like, like what about all the other parts of his range that have a paired card? You know, like what, what about?
Yeah, no, this is probably a very bad shove, it just, sometimes I just go with my in-game.
Yeah.
And, and to just go for it, right? Like I've decided I'm going for this.
So he has a skin here and you do that, it's gonna fold. So he has a bluff here, you do that, it's gonna fold. Think this type of hand, you kinda have to buckle up and call?
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe that's the best play.
Yeah, if he has you beat, he's never folding, and if you have him beat, he's never calling, so there's no value in it.
Yeah.
And I'm folding three.
Folding three.
What about hands? What about hands as king, queen?
We have a, we have a small pocket pair.
Yeah, might be, might be a good fold, right?
Yeah.
But look at the stack distribution, like there's so many. Shorties or equal stack of another guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, folding wouldn't be the worst pre flop.
Me and him had, where we had quite a dynamic, we were on the same table for quite some time too. Um, but still, it was still very spewy to jam there. This is, this was a big hand here, yeah.
Ooh.
I should, I, I think I missed a bet here, I should have blocked. Um.
Sucks that it's.
I, I posted this one on the M T T hands. Yeah, I think I missed some value on this one here.
You got a shove here.
Yeah, it.
Yeah, he's, he's only got half pot left, just.
Yeah. In game, I was, I was thinking he might actually blast off with that and I wasn't really gonna fold to anything other than a spade. Um, not a spade, a club. Cause I, he would have had some ace ten in his frequency, I think, calling pre flop, but um, I definitely missed some value there.
Was this a bolt with ace four?
It was four big blinds or three big blinds.
Okay.
Yeah.
You're just feeding him.
I don't know, pot odds.
You have a pot odd, I C M really mucks up pot odds.
Yeah, I agree there too, but at that point, like if I can eliminate another player, um, it's not really jeopardizing my stack or my position at the table, sort of what I was thinking.
So, this here, I would just fold three flop.
What are raises here? Three bets, any ace, any king?
Suited ace wheels, suited kings. That's about it.
Yep.
Actually, you know what? You're the big blind, you're gonna have, it's not gonna be suited ace and suited kings here. Censor the big blind and censor the big stack, we're suited ace, suited kings wanna call. So you're gonna use ace five offsuit, ace four offsuit, ace three offsuit.
What about the low connected kings?
Where it changes a little bit when we're in I C M, especially as the big stack, we get to three bet a lot more suited stuff too.
Now it's offsuit here from the big blind.
I do have a tendency to defend, over defend a lot of times.
Falling here. Yeah, I remember that, you know why? Cause I got in a fight with Ken. Ken was raising ace five offsuit. I told him it was terrible. And then we looked at the machine and the machine says it was amazing. That's why I remember him.
Sounds familiar, Louis.
Okay.
I get there.
Yeah. Let's see, aces?
Uh, please don't call, please don't call.
Close, it's close, I think it'd be a call here.
Ace nine, ace ten.
Very, no, 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 this is very close to a call. Yeah, I like that. You've got a good sense of your like block bets on the river after it goes check, check, you never miss one either. And your sizing was always roughly good.
I appreciate that. I have been trying to get better.
This is a little too deep to treat, to not three bet, cause yeah, you're trying to save this guy, right? But you're playing forty bit line effective against that guy.
Yeah, yeah, I, I regretted this and then.
It doesn't really open action though, doesn't it? But when it can be open action, I think it becomes flat.
Now, in I C M, you don't slow play as much as you do in chippy V.
Yeah, 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 okay, they're good.
The guy, the guy had pocket sevens that opened.
Woo.
So I probably get stacked if, if, uh, or close, well, I, I, I probably wouldn't got stacked with the aces there, but.
Got him.
That was a close call. He showed the pocket sevens, I was like, ooh.
Ooh. Ludging bullets. Again, pair board, just bet small.
Bad, very small bet.
What he had on the four bigs, the big one.
I think I just put them all in, yeah.
Ooh, a better queen. Man, you just did nothing on this final table, basically.
Oh, is this an open? Do you open jam into the big stack? Holy shit.
That's not good.
Nah, oh, yeah. Nah, I don't jam you.
Like, what, what if he just wakes up here with like pocket tens and snaps you off?
The problem doolies, they always wakes up precisely here with pocket kings and then these two.
Yeah, I should have just been a man, yeah.
Yeah, we don't really need to do this big size, it's not like they have ten or twelve big blinds and we need to put the pressure on with four big blinds, like we can just bin raise and it's fine.
Well, spot that, this is a very big mistake.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, if you're gonna do something like this, you can, you can do some sort of exploit where you go like, I don't know, like five big blinds pre flop or six big blinds pre flop or something. Yeah, it sucks if you like jams on you or whatever, but at least you're not risking your whole stack. These guys are dancing in real life if you bust.
Yeah, yeah.
Whoa.
Okay, so you made a deal, it's up, I think.
I think we, we chopped this, yeah.
Oh, that makes sense, okay.
And then after that, it's just like push, fold, push, fold, push, fold, blah, 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 blah.
We might have done the deal there, I might have just called him with king high there.
And then you get.
But you're still playing for the discord medal?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the glory.
The glory. Well, well played, Arnie, was a nice.
I appreciate you taking the time.
Do your other run on, on Friday.
Yeah, the other one has a lot of interesting ads.
Yes. Well, well played, man. Thanks a lot for sharing, for putting.
Thanks, everybody. I appreciate you guys being here and hearing all your input.
Congrats.
Thank you, Arnie.
Alright, and while.
See you guys all later.
Josh, are you still here? Josh?
No, he brought the chat up.
He's really shut, yeah.
Uh, unfortunately. Any one of you guys are playing live?
Playing what?
Live.
No.
We play sometimes.
Oh, a minute.
Okay, I have a friend who coded a new app for the phone. And then uh, he needs some testers, so if you guys are interested, I'm gonna put the link.
My phone's broke at my head as well, so I don't use it on my phone.
So it's some kind of history tracker or?
It's a thing to, you use to take notes at the poker table.
Oh, that's pretty cool. Can you use it? Can I, can I like get this up on my computer instead and just see?
I think so, it's on the, it's on the goggle play.
Yeah, I've just clicked on it now, it's saying.
We, uh, set, put it in, uh, resources.
So, right? And he wants some, uh, some feedback.
Louis, who made this?
A friend, a friend of mine, a guy, a poker coaching guy.
What's his name?
Doug Mattingly on Facebook.
Dog Mattingly, got it.
Dog Mattingly.
Copy link, let's see.
I've been.
Installing.
Talking with him for a couple of years now, he's a follower of Jonathan Michael.
Okay, cool.
And he wants some feedback, so it would be greatly appreciated.
Louis, you say his name Doug, not dog.
Dog.
Yeah, you said dog.
Doug.
I'm sorry.
Screw you guys.